Okay. Welcome, everyone. I call to order the Beaverton School Board Business Meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We're gonna start with a quick roll call of board members. Board members answer with present when I call your name. Susan Greenberg.
Present.
And Susan is joining us virtually today. Karen Perez.
Present.
Eric Simpson.
Present.
Sunita Guard.
Present.
Donna Enenaya.
Present.
Becky Timchuck.
Here.
Tom Colette is present, and so we have the board. I'd like to begin with the land acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge that our district rests on the traditional land of the Tuolton Kalapuya. We thank the ancestors of the Kalapuya for being the original stewards and protectors of these lands. We are honored by the collective work of many indigenous nations, leaders and families who demonstrate resilience, resistance, revitalization, healing, and creativity. Does anyone have any changes they would like to make to the agenda tonight? And Susan, I'm looking at you virtually. Are you good? Okay, you're good. Great. Okay, then we're gonna start with a couple of recognitions. I think Karen, you have our first recognition tonight.
So today we are going to be recognizing Westview High School sophomore Abigail Figueroa, who has won the right for her school to perform Oregon's premiere of Disney's Frozen, the Musical. The Educational Theater Association, the Disney Theatrical Groups, and Music Theater International are providing grants to over fifty schools to produce first productions of the musical. Westview Production of Frozen, the Musical, will run March second through the fourth and ninth through the eleventh. Participants were asked to describe their unique vision of Frozen and how they would use the theme "Love is an Open Door" as an opportunity to strengthen their school's community, provide outreach to underserved groups, and support inclusive diverse theater programs. Abigail's submission can be read online, and when I was reading that, I noticed part of her submission, she said, "Westview is the best choice to exemplify and represent the theme 'Love is an Open Door' because we are a public high school, open to and accepting of all, who make up our student body of two thousand five hundred and twenty-five students, sixty-one percent of which are BIPOC, many of whom identify as LGBTQ2SI+ with fifty-two home languages and diverse socioeconomic backgrounds. Westview has a motto which supports its inclusive community, the Wildcat Way. We welcome all, we resist hate, we practice kindness, and we celebrate differences. We rise to the challenge, and we are Westview." And in her submission, she also said, "We will showcase the talents of underrepresented groups, giving them opportunities to shine onstage as leads or offstage with valuable crew roles, elevating BIPOC students and demonstrating the importance of representation." And she said, "I'm a biracial Latina student who also identifies as LGBTQ2SI+ and I haven't seen a Latina lead at Westview. So it's exciting to see this opportunity for our students. So thank you, Abigail."
Abigail, if you're in the audience, come on up.
Hi. I just want to say thank you so much for doing this tonight. It's been a lot. The grant I wrote is really special to me because this is what I want to do with my life. I want to go out and I want to act. And having a chance to be able to give myself and others like me opportunities at my school to do that, where there may not have been in the past, really means a lot. So thank you.
Thank you, Abigail.
And we've got an award for you.
Yeah.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
And we have another award tonight. We have Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. Nicole Serita, PE teacher at West Walton Valley Elementary School, has been named Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year by the Oregon Society of Health and Physical Educators. FAB's Teachers of the Year Program recognizes outstanding teachers in adaptive physical education, school health education, dance education, and physical education at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Congratulations, Nicole Serita. Would you come up and say some words?
And thank you to the school board for taking time to recognize me for this exciting award. Thank you for found out last month at the Oregon SHAPE Conference. And thank you to my principal, Carl Valentine, for helping me communicate this exciting news. And then to Gregory Tritis, an adapted PE specialist for our district, for helping me with this process. I've been teaching for ten years now, nine of which have been at West Tuolton View. And I'm very fortunate to work alongside of some amazing colleagues, and I feel very fortunate to be able to bring quality physical education to our community. Thank you.
All right. Well, last but in no way least, we want to recognize one of our own tonight. Becky Timchuck has been named the two thousand twenty-two Oregon School Board Member of the Year by the Oregon School Board Association. Becky received the honor on Saturday at the state convention. We all know what Becky's contributions to the district have been over the years, and they are numerous. And to just name a few, recently helping us pass the bond and serving as board chair for this board for three years straight, you know, through some very difficult times. We have put together a short video so the community can see as well all of the great things that Becky has done. So we're gonna turn it over to the video right now. Becky Timchuck is an absolute powerhouse. She's a powerhouse board member, she's a powerhouse state advocate, and just community and kid advocate.
I've known Becky since both as her role as a parent. She was a speech and debate coach at Southridge, and then also as a school board member as well.
So what are you guys working on?
Becky walks the walk. That's the thing that's most special about Becky is she has a true passion for schools, educators, kids. She knows what's happening day to day. She knows what goes well in schools. She also knows the struggles that we have.
It's rewarding. It tests your patience and your resilience. It's wonderful to be part of a team. You know, the best part of all is the work that we get to do on behalf of the students, with the students.
She's been nothing but supportive in terms of trying to make sure kids have access to resources, but that our teachers also feel like they are supported in the work they do every day.
This year's School Board Member of the Year, Becky Timchuck of the Beaverton School District.
So it's a very humbling thing to be recognized because there are so many hardworking, worthy folks right here in the Beaverton School District around the state of Oregon. And to be singled out is, it's just not a single, it is something you do in collaboration. It's something we all do as school board members.
Becky Timchuck is one of the hardest working board members I've had the honor to work with. And her hours of dedication, you know, from just staying up our levy process, our bond process, and just working hard to advocate for our kids, it's truly, truly remarkable how many hours she spent in.
This is work worth doing. There is nothing more important than the future of our community, the future of our state, the future of our country, than educating our students.
Here it is. You have a few words for us. There is a mic in front of you.
I am, I am all talked out. I really am. Very, thank you very, very much on my heart. Thank you.
Right. Okay, next up, we have the superintendent's report. Turn it over to Dr. Baldarris.
So thank you. And again, I want to thank Becky for her recognition, the State School Board Member of the Year. As she has stated in her humble self, it is the overall collective that deserves this award. Her leading the effort to pass our last bond was unmatched. It really, it really was. Her giving self to this school district will be remembered. At the OSBA meeting, Becky spoke to the keeping, to keeping students at the foremost in our decision-making. She spoke about having civility in our discussions and our disagreements, and having school boards across the state having an understanding of their roles and responsibilities. But having a collective voice in Salem to advocate for our public schools, and that we cannot do this alone. We need a collective lift to continue to improve our public schools. I take notes a lot of those. So Becky has always championed public schools long before her eight-year tenure as a school board member. And I know full well she will always be there for our district. It's always been that about kids for Becky. It's always been about kids for Becky, and we look forward to her being a champion in our district for years to come. So thank you, Becky, for everything you've done. Also, I want to thank our voters for their overwhelming support in the passage of our teacher levy, which provides two hundred and eighty-six teachers into our schools. One thing, all the board members that took lead in this effort and campaigned door-to-door to supporting our messaging at the farmer's market. A really special thanks to two board members that took lead in the levy, Dr. Karen Perez and Sunita Guard. Incredible efforts, our BEA partners for their tireless efforts at promoting the bonds. Thank you. The lift was heavy fall in our community's support for our construction bond, and our community stepped up with over seventy-one percent of our voters supporting the levy. Again, a huge thank you to the voters for your commitment and your trust in the school district. Lastly, as fall athletics wrap up, I want to thank all our coaches and athletes for an incredible fall season. Every athlete and every coach, thank you for your dedication, the hours, hours being spent on the fields. Many of us have participated in either extracurricular activities or athletics, or have had our own kids participate. When kids are young, they aspire to be those kids that see play at the high school that want Fridays, Tuesdays, Mondays, Wednesdays. They play all the time. In the end, it's about the creation of memories for these kids. It really is about the creation of memories. No one really ever remembers every game or every performance, but they remember the highlights of that bus ride, going to that away trip, or the camaraderie, just being part of a team. Again, it's something that I know coaching, I coached for twenty-four years as well when my kids were younger, the varsity level, all the way to the little guy level. But again, the commitment to all the families, the parents, to pushing their kids for, as they, as they continue their, their fall season. We do have one team left. I think the Westview Football is playing this Friday at Hillsborough Stadium in the, in the, what's that bracket? The lower bracket. It's not the upper bracket, the lower bracket, but they're still playing football. They're still playing football, so we still have one team in. But there's numerous teams that made it to the playoffs, and it's just outstanding effort that our kids do so well, and look forward to the fall, the winter season that takes place here pretty soon, too. So basketball, and all the wrestling, and all the other good stuff, volleyball is over, but a lot of, a lot of sports happening here pretty quick. So thank you, board, for your commitment in passing the levy. It's a great week for Beaverton, passing the levy and also the School Board Member of the Year. So congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Baldarris. Next up, we have comments from our labor partners. First, we have Lindsay Ray from the Beaverton Education Association.
No, there it is. Hello. Good evening, Superintendent Baldarris, or Chair Colette, and members of the school board. For the record, my name is Lindsay Ray. I'm a high school math teacher currently serving as president of the Beaverton Education Association. First of all, I'm gonna echo Dr. Baldarris in celebration and wholeheartedly thanking Beaverton voters for their support of the Beaverton Teachers Levy. The generosity of our community ensures that we will be able to maintain teaching positions and therefore class sizes to help our students in all of our schools. Thank you, thank you. And I also echo the thanks to Dr. Perez and Sunita Guard for their help as well. So. Ooh, I'm excited. That said, now that the election is over, we have much work to do to make sure that the legislature and the new governor understand the importance of adequately funding public schools, so we can keep providing the support and services that our students so desperately need and provide lower class sizes. Our students need that. That comes in the form of stable and robust state school funding, as well as maintaining and utilizing the student staff. Let's do it. I would also like to acknowledge that BSD staff and students are still emerging from the incredible collective and individual problems of the pandemic and the tumult of the last several years. As we move forward with school that feels very normal, many students are struggling more than, more than ever, especially with mental health. With so many vacancies and the ranks of paraeducators we all depend on to provide vital supports for our students, educators are stretched very thin, and students are struggling as a result. Special educators who are already overwhelmed in the before times are even more underwater now and are now while working to identify and serve students with increase. It is imperative to recognize that our students and staff need support. We simply cannot move forward like nothing has changed. Historically marginalized populations are especially impacted, and it is our duty to make sure students and staff feel safe, valued, and supported. The world today is very different than even just a couple of years ago, and I hope that BSD is thoughtful in addressing the urgent and increased.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next up, we have Kirsty Sakman from OSEA. True.
Is he still on? Yeah, okay. Good evening, Superintendent Chair Colette and members of the board. Major. I would first like to start, as OSEA, we would like to say congratulations to Becky, and we want to say thank you for all your tireless work and effort and all you do for our school board, our community, our staff, and our students. I also would like to say that I actually found out from your daughter on her Facebook. We went to high school together. She was very proud. I think of all our thanks, that one probably meant pretty much the most to you. She was very excited today. I would like to introduce myself. For anyone who doesn't know, I'm Kirsty Sakman. I'm a paraeducator two, working in an elementary specialized program, and I am the OSEA president for our classified staff. We as OSEA have continued to grow our connections and communication with many different departments and BSD management over the last few months of this school year. We work tirelessly alongside of BEA as well as our OSEA union in support of our election, and we are very happy to say that we're excited about this levy. We know that it doesn't directly look on paper like it affects classified staff, but we all know it does because it affects our students, our families, and our buildings, which is a direct impact on classified staff, and we are very excited for this win. We also as OSEA classified staff are happy to report that in this last bargaining, we were able to make some changes to the salary pay scale. And through this fall season, we have found some higher positions in transportation that were not reflected. So we were able to come to an agreement with our BSD management with support and very clear support and love and quickness to get these staff paid for their hard work. A lot of our staff in the higher transportation positions have worked tirelessly for years for our district. They worked very hard through a pandemic to do things as seemingly small as delivering books and food during a pandemic, to growing constant routes and covering positions, to going up the ladder to want to do more, to want to be a bigger position, to not only gain control and success in their life, but for our district. And we were able to come to an agreement to get them a higher pay rate for all the tireless work and all they do for us. We also have worked hard to update our bilingual differential pay assessment and the process going into it, and how staff and when staff will be paid. And we thank the BSD management for the quick and this pure energy in getting this done and supporting our staff. Like Lindsay said from BEA, there's a lot that we're still recovering from. The pandemic is not over. The results of the pandemic and what happened to our staff and our community is not over, but we're working hard to continue to fight hard, to be a stronger community, to grow together, and to find ways to fill these gaps and to fill and catch people up, students, teachers, classified staff, and everyone in between. We would like to say thank you for everyone working so hard in our subpositions, in our classified roles, in our teaching roles, our admin roles, our BSD management. It's a hard fight. We've hired a lot of new staff, and it's wonderful. And we also recognize all of the hardworking staff working to include and invite these new people into our community, to teach them our ways, and to also learn new ways from our new staff. It's very important that we open our arms to new staff and old staff alike, as well as community students and families, and we're thankful for everyone's hard work. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirsty. All right. The next part of our meeting is public comments. And I just want to start by noting that we received seven written public comments. Board members, appreciate your comments, and thank each and every one of you for taking the time to share your thoughts with us. Thank you for attending the school board meeting with us today. We are truly grateful for your presence and the opportunity to receive your input. One of our district's greatest strengths is community involvement. As we know, your involvement comes from a place of caring for our students, families, community, and staff. Please know that board members do not respond directly to testimony, but we are paying close attention to your comments. We know it can be difficult to testify in public, but we are sincerely interested in hearing your comments and concerns. We ask that all present model respectful behavior to provide an open space in which a variety of viewpoints and perspectives can be shared. To that end, a few guidelines. Our comments do not allow for the specific naming of school personnel. Personnel matters should be dealt with either through the complaint process or by contacting a principal or central office staff member. If school personnel is named during a comment period, I will stop your comments and ask you to refrain from naming the person. If it occurs a second time, you will be asked to end your comments. Commenters are allowed to comment on any subject. Any previous restrictions on commenting only on agenda items before the board have been removed. Everyone has two minutes to provide testimony to the board. Timer will be set and will go off at the two-minute mark. If you continue talking beyond the two minutes, I will ask you to end your comments. To ensure fair treatment, fair treatment for all commenters, this will be enforced uniformly, regardless of the subject matter, point of view, or whether you have finished your prepared comments. I understand it can be difficult to provide comments within this shortened time period, and recommend that any comments you did not have time to provide orally be sent to the board in an email or paper form. Please do not speak or interrupt the meeting outside of the two-minute period provided for your testimony. If this occurs, you will be asked to leave or remove from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us tonight. We look forward to hearing your comments. And the first comment we have tonight is Kinoah Sandberg. Whenever you're ready, just let me know, and I'll start the timer.
I'll take that for more. It's a good time. Okay. Hi. Good morning, Superintendent Baldarris. I'm Chair Colette and board members. I'm Toshka Maresi, the administrator for multilingual programs, also the administrator of the C-India-Lasque program. I would like to congratulate Becky Timchuck for your award. It actually is the time of the award. We're actually here to celebrate Native American Heritage Month, and we're board members with the American roots, so congratulations. So I am going to pass it over to Kinoah. She is going to say a few words about Native American Heritage Month, and then we also have a look at for you all.
Thanks, love, board members, superintendent, and community. My name's Kinoah Sandberg. I am the American Indian Alaska Native Education TOSA and a member of the Coquill Indian Tribe. My coworker, Gary Wesley, wasn't able to make it here tonight, but he is the Title VI Native Education Coordinator and is an enrolled member of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. I'm grateful to be here today as we celebrate Native American Heritage Month. We would like to thank you for your ongoing support of American Indian Alaska Native education programs, for support of our annual cultural camp, the adoption and use of the BSD land acknowledgement, and recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and Native American Heritage Month. We also celebrate being in year two of BSD's implementation of Senate Bill thirteen, Tribal History Shared History. This bill states that every school district in Oregon implements historically accurate, culturally embedded, place-based, contemporary, and developmentally appropriate Native American and Alaskan Native curriculum. Gary and I have been visiting schools around the district to aid in the rollout of this curriculum and also to support indigenous student groups. One of these groups sat Whitford Middle School, and on behalf of their native club, I would like to give to you with these cedar bark wristbands. Traditionally, they were the size of headbands and used in ceremonies and celebrations. In the students' last gathering, they created these and welcomed the idea of gifting wristbands to the school board as a showing of appreciation. I'd like to approach now and give you, personally give you these.
Perfect. Right, right on time.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So next up, I think we have three folks who wanted to come up together. So Rita Morgan, Amalak, and Kamaria, are you great? And I'm, what I'm thinking of doing is putting six minutes on and letting y'all, if you kind of want to segue between one another, or would you prefer that I give you two-minute segments? Do you have a preference?
Hi there. I'm also with that group. I'm just online. That's okay.
Is that Daniel?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And I think we also had Alex. Is Alex present?
Alex is with us, too.
Is Alex, Alex should be here virtually?
Yes.
I only, he is, okay. Do you want me to, to give you all two minutes at a time, or do you want me to kind of put the full time and then have you?
Full time.
Okay. All right. So I think we've got five folks then, so I'll put ten minutes on, and then you guys can pass it between one another. I've just asked that, you know, commenters, keep it to about two-minute sheets.
I think Daniel's going to go first and I'll start.
Daniel, just let me know when you're ready, and we'll, we'll get going.
I am. Thank you. So good evening to the superintendent, members of the board. Thanks for having me here. My name's Daniel Haddie, and I'm a senior currently at Mountainside High School. I was actually one of the students that first joined Club Hope at Mountainside when Ms. Morgan came over from Beaverton, and I haven't looked back. It's been a great experience. Here at Club Hope, I serve as CEO of Advocacy and Politics. Club Hope's mission is to support students experiencing homelessness by filling the gaps. So we aim to partner with other nonprofit organizations, not compete with them. And this is what makes Club Hope so important. We advocate for every student currently slipping through the cracks of the clunky, multifaceted approach we have to youth homelessness reduction in Beaverton. So it's my understanding that, though cliche, the early bird gets the worm. So as June twenty twenty-three gets closer and closer, Club Hope is here to sincerely ask for increased funding for youth homelessness services in the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four school year budget. I looked through the budget for two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. That was adopted in June twenty twenty-two. There is only one mention of youth homelessness in the entire budget, and it is covered in the description portion of the Student Success Act. When working on the budget this year, please consider the hardship and suffering that students experiencing homelessness go through every day in our district. Hundreds of students, many unaccompanied youths, are left without safe spaces to study, explore passions, and without basic necessities. So please, a portion more funding to youth homelessness services. I'm really hopeful that this year can be filled with new direction and action, as COVID is hopefully coming to a close. And I look forward to Club Hope working closely. Um, and I look forward to Club Hope working closely with the board this year and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Um, I'm gonna talk fast, so I'll send you guys a copy of my thing because of time. So thank you so much for allowing Club Hope to talk tonight. I super appreciate it. My name's Rita Morgan. I've been teaching social studies in the district since two thousand, first at Beaverton High School and now I'm at Mountainside. I'm also Club Hope advisor. Our mission with Club Hope is to support students experiencing homelessness through advocacy, awareness, assistance and outreach. The pandemic opened many eyes in Beaverton to the reality that many in our community face. And we are here today to make sure that the district and the community doesn't close their eyes on some of our most vulnerable, our most inspiring and our most hopeful. Each year I've had students experiencing homelessness in my classes and it's rare that anyone else in the class knows. By high school, many dropouts, student, by a high school, many students experiencing homelessness either drop out or become experts in hiding their situation. I don't think I'll ever recover from when I learned that there were a few students that were living on their own in a tent camping in the bushes by the Walmart just on Murray in Beaverton during the pandemic. It was in the spring of twenty twenty, it took months, about five months before they get sheltered and there were some cold months. We had like those ice storms in April and it was two females that were hiding in the bushes. Beaverton isn't Portland, but homelessness exists. It's primarily families and it's families that are trying to not be obvious about it. Um, I talked to one of the homeless liaisons today. And she said that they're seeing higher than pre-pandemic numbers already. Most families are in their car due to infections. That was one of the big fears with what infections would do and it's happening. Instead of also causing families to separate, they have kids staying with friends while parents are unhoused. She also said they've had three fires this year that have displaced about fifteen families. There's a lot of refugees and immigrant families continuing to move into our community into temporary housing situations. Already we have eighty-two unaccompanied students. So currently, and it's currently taking about eight weeks or more to get them into shelter. There's currently no immediate shelter options for families in our entire community. Or in the county right now. One of the goals of Club Hope has been to raise awareness, advocate and provide support. We can't solve it alone. I'm very blessed within a community that steps up when asked. I've experienced it again and again. Beaverton at Mountainside, it is an exceptional community. We need greater funding, more liaisons, more time to coordinate efforts. As for Club Hope, we'd love to invite you all to an open house at Mountainside to be able to spend some more time to talk to you about it. So please look for an invite. You're also more than welcome to request a time or to join a meeting. We meet Mondays at, at Slough Mountainside. But back to awareness, I just read my principal's weekly update regarding that. District's policy on inclement mud weather and McKinney-Bento students were mentioned. I was delighted that they were mentioned. Although I was truly devastated and disheartened that the students essentially were brushed off, those that were needing extra transportation if they weren't in there, um, if they were outside of their homes to school. And they basically, it just said that they would not be going to school if there was a delay. I understand the constraints. However, this is our most vulnerable population. Students experiencing homelessness almost always need food. And denying school denies them two meals. We also are denying student stability, heat, childcare, learning for the day. Requiring them to make up work, return to school missing work, expecting them to have access to the learning without adequate housing, et cetera. I do not think this decision was made callously or without the belief in its acceptance. However, we're a brilliant, creative, solution-based group of educators and I know we can figure out a solution. We got through the pandemic, we can do this. I also know how many people were volunteering to step up to deliver food and deliver things during the pandemic, so I know this is something that's definitely feasible to at least drop off a week's lunch. I'm also seeing a lot of positive changes in the district. Um, I'm currently on the Digital Equity Leadership Group and I'm delighted by the group and the leadership. And I'm hoping that the team has the power and the money to implement some positive changes. I also recognize that often we don't know what we don't know. The working booth, unaccompanied people moving, unaccompanied youth living in this car. I thought that the wife spots were like the best thing ever until I realized how little you actually got from those and it's, it's it's a few hours of homework is all they're really good for. I also realized what good are they if you're living in your, I think you can't really charge your phone, charge your, your computer, charge anything. Again, we're living in a great community. We're living in a community with a lot of I mean, intel's right there and all of the like businesses connected to it. We could partner with local businesses to get solar power batteries for laptops. I bought one for him, but district-wide I know we can do it. It's not gonna cost the money. It's just more, we need to have the effort to do it. Another example of successful partnering is Second Home. Years ago, after Next Minute Surge and other company, Youth, the former Great Homelessness Liaison, Lisa Metz, Savannah and Jenny. Parent came up with Second Home, matches host families within the company Youth. Second Home now has an average of over a ninety percent graduation rate. Far exceeding any other demographic group and dwarfing the state rate of a fifty-four percent graduation rate for students experiencing homelessness. There's talk of Second Home even becoming a national program and it started here in Beaverton. It's truly exceptional and it's one we're underutilizing. With a little promotion and word of mouth, we could have a plethora of loving families for our unaccompanied youth. Including families like the Red Orange Solbak, I'm hoping I've got that correctly, families who opened up their home for two unaccompanied youth and treated these young men like their family and they're still their Oregon parents. I was fortunate to have those students in class and spent quite a bit of time talking with the parents. To get one of the students to be a little bit less relaxed and a bit more focused to finish his work. I can't possibly capture the joy, love, inspiration from this family. However, I don't have to be kept alive. Keep saying names because a person who works for the district who's amazing is about to kill them and then posted later this week, so please look out for that. Um, and then recently there is a Beaverton School District graduate Sabina, who actually helped create and write as one, an Oregon House Bill that became a law. That will now provide tuition waivers and rent assistance to youth who have experienced homelessness and haven't been in the foster care system. She's now working for Second Home. Students thrive and Beaverton families are willing to host an accompany you. As a teacher, it's a win-win. It makes her job easy, makes her less stressful. We need to fully team up with and promote Second Home. I implore you to always think of those students experiencing homelessness and all you do. Please have them in the back of your mind. Students have to have their basis. That's what we're asking. Basically, they need shelter. We cannot sit in places of privilege and power and not at least try. Please properly fund the McKinney-Bento Center. Please proper, please partner with Second Home fully. Please intentionally partner with the Beaverton Resource Center. We're stronger together. Club Hope and I are happy to work with everyone. I've learned so much by working with people who don't agree with me. Everything is possible. Please don't leave students experiencing homelessness outside in the cold without breakfast, lunch or slowly because of a two hour delay. Please keep your eyes open, listen to your heart, be compliant and support our students. And hopefully the district will bring about this wide spread systemic change to impact our students. Experiencing hunger, homelessness and poverty. As an educator, we all took lessons from Hope or students, we all took, we all look for the lessons and hope amid the tragedy. I hope the tragedy of student homelessness and the pandemic wasn't in vain, but instead brings a reckoning of more support, partner connections and service.
And there's less than a minute left, so.
Um, I'll quickly say, um, I'm probably at least part of Mason. I'm a member of the Mountainside. Oh, I'm the CEO of Outreach and Awareness. I just wanted to say that the work that the Leo, these, these, what is it? Liaisons are doing is amazing and we need to properly fund them and support them to be able to do this work. The, we need to, this is, I know the district is working on equity and this is equity. We have to support our students. We have to, we don't, we cannot overlook our homeless youth. We have to pay attention to them. Be an equitable school. We have to support them wholeheartedly.
Okay, ten seconds left. I apologize. If you have other comments, please send them an email to us.
Well, my name is Malak, I'm a teacher one and I'm a high school student, freshman.
I'm, I'm so sorry, but we're gonna have to end there. It was ten, ten minutes for the whole group.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other public comments? So, next up we have the consent agenda. Um, do I have here a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved that we, we approved the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded for the consent agenda. Uh, we'll take a vote of board members and board members answer with I, nay, or abstain. Uh, Susan Greenberg.
Aye.
Karen Perez.
Aye.
Eric Simpson.
Aye.
Janita Guard.
Aye.
Ugon Ananaya. Nikki Timchuck.
Aye.
I'm glad, aye, and consent agenda passes unanimously. Next up we have reports, starting with a financial report from Mike Scopio.
All right, thank you for having an opportunity to go over the financial report. Another month has passed and here we are, uh, reporting on October uh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, in your package tonight, the, um, general fund activity and forecast, uh, summary of revenue. Death, bike schools and wealth or investment reports. We also have a, an item I'd like to draw attention to, the report on our spring projection versus where we are on pre-final. So if you look at um, if people feel like just, you've got to hold them, um, that is uh, a comparison, kind of our scorecard that we need to give others to say. What do people tell us pretty much, and we, we have to go and learn and be, and uh, be able to see that. Okay, so this is looking at my, this is, I would say, uh, raw format of improvised, like maybe in the three, you'll see our uh, resources listed, if we can, come out. State support, and then our, uh, so. Um, and which I don't have any benefits and then everything else. And on the, the column next to that, you see what our spring projection was. Next to that, you can see what our pre-final is. That's what we anticipate that you'll see next month. Get our audit and financials, where we ended up the business. And if you look in the far column, you see the variance between them. So looking at our resources, you can see, we, we estimated we have six hundred billion five hundred thousand dollars in our spring projection for total resources and where we ended, um based on where our twenty-one, twenty-two audit financials expect to be is six hundred million, eight hundred, ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven hundred. So we were within five one hundred percent of our estimate on our resources this year. Again, another sign that, um, as we get through the pandemic, numbers start to look a little more normal, like more anticipated, or more expected. But kudos to the finance team, that goes on that number, uh, very impressive. Uh, on the expenditure side, you can see we have salary benefits and all of them be anticipated four hundred and ninety-four, one, seven million. And our spring projection, we have these, I mean, four hundred and ninety-one point one million. Again, a variance of, uh, seven tenths of a percent, so only one percent of what we thought would be so much. When we're talking to you in April, and we say this is where we're gonna end here, this shows you actually where, where we're willing to do there. Uh, again, impressive on our finance team, uh, for their work of estimating, uh, the district. So any questions about that or I'll go on to this month?
Becky, Becky?
Not a ton of then, uh, comment. And that, uh, classes that I was in this last weekend was about Finance one oh one. And, uh, again, talk about someone that is, we have to all know as a school board, we are in such good hands that we have an audit committee that we have, folks that are paying attention to this financial. We have one of the best business managers and CFOs in the state right here in our district and um, that's gotta be a great lead to our superintendent because it's such an important thing that we do. And, um, I so appreciate that, that we have a board that looks at policy and that we put reserves in, but that I mean, just kudos to you and your team, Mike. I mean, it's, we are really, really fortunate to have such great business folks in our business office. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions, comments from the board?
Okay, so okay. So when we look at the, uh, the current year, as of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, um, we made a minor adjustments on it. I didn't know that, it's far enough, but we're getting from the, uh, Northwest Regional BSD. Uh, which is reset by about a million dollars. That's simply due to, um, some services we aren't purging through them, so they'll pass that through in cash. Um, and we have no changes on the expenditure, but so roughly, uh, what we're projecting this year is we've been down our reserves in the neighborhood of ten dollars. Um, that's left, and what we initially budgeted, uh, that's still again, just to dry your tent, spending more than a grand a year. Now, by choice and by budget, um, we're planning to adopt the budget to do, adopt, yeah. Uh, finance, the rest of the financial reports I'll leave to themselves unless you have questions about those. I've got a couple of notes, uh, the state's, uh, revenue forecast is coming. The state's revenue forecast is coming, um, it will be released on, uh, Wednesday at ten in the morning. So for those who consider kind of uh, accounting geeks who want to see how the state's doing on revenue with what the forecast is for the uh, economy in the state of Oregon, that'll be released Wednesday morning at ten. I'll be watching for sure. Um, and in terms of investments, you see we've got significant, significant investments to uh, passage to the bond, as we mentioned earlier tonight. And that's all I have.
Other questions from the board, Eric?
I heard we had a clean budget auditing committee meeting last week.
Great, great audit committee, great audit committee meeting last week, um, free participation points there. Uh, and it was, um, successful, uh, our, our auditor from both these, like was there, and it opened, um, kind of the basics of the statements and the changes that were made this year's course. It was a great meeting, great.
Other questions from Mike? Um, Mike, my only question is about the million dollars. If it's a pass through, um, are we gonna have to spend it on services ourselves or is that like a net gain for the budget?
Uh, overall net gain for the budget. It's a little bit up there where we ended last year and, and some new services this year, but, uh, overall, I would say net gain.
Okay, great. And, oh, Karen?
Um, when is it that we're gonna be looking at the step, like the stair stepping down of the Escher funds?
So that's, that's happened, that
We already did that?
Yeah.
That's happened this year a little bit. Um, so last year we funded about a hundred and fifty positions, about a best, this year a hundred. Next year, year after that, uh, September of two thousand twenty-four, the funds go away. So we're, we're, we're kind of in the middle.
And with that, I'm gonna take a five minutes. Oh, Suni, do you have a question?
Yes. So, as we are reducing, is general fund taking over or are we just letting those decisions go?
That, that's up for discussion. So we're at the start of our budget process. We'll work early, we'll do that. So we know we have these one, one-time Escher funded positions out there. And, um, as we develop the budget, you'll see proposals that either include or exclude some of those positions depending on decisions paid by the superintendent, Kevin. In terms of recommendations.
And, and by when do we, do we know that, that timeline?
In terms of the timeline, you, you'll get your first kind of insight into the budget in March. We'll do a budget one oh one and then in May you'll actually have a
But for staff, it's, uh, low, it's earlier for staff.
Oh, absolutely. Our, our budget calendar, we've begun. So actually in the business office, unbelievably, we start the budget process for the next year in September. So we've already begun and, and, and a lot, and the conversations and, and, you know, anticipation of where we're landing in state, that kind of uh, we kind of feel our way through that over the next few months.
And for clarity, the Escher funds, funds not teachers, but the staff, right? It's, it's not for teachers.
We have a few teachers in the Escher Fund that we've used from time to time, for example, uh, uh, last year I think we funded seven positions out of Escher. Um, I think we've got a few at the middle school level to reduce class size in the current year. Funded through Escher, but, but by comparison, no, not, not, not so much.
Okay, thank you. And I think that was where my question was, was more, I know we started it, but I was just thinking about what's our process and so maybe when we do the budget piece, if you could point out where those changes might be happening.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll show you that when we bring you budget this next go around and see kind of positions that that sustain, those that have gone away, kind of the net of where we are. Uh, as we work through the, the budget process to develop the twenty-two point four budget.
Yeah.
Do not know how to work that.
Becky?
And there is also opportunity that depending on certain things, there could be some things that are going to be directly funded by the state that we don't know about yet and that could be summer school, it could be mental health, it could be, and so those would be things that we would be getting a different revenue stream from the state that we would not have to accommodate in our general general budget. Is that, is that, there, I mean, nothing's definite, but those are some of the things that the state is talking about.
Those are some of the ideas that are out there currently. That's correct, Greg, or should Tim check? And I would also say there are also an SIA review too. But all, we have a lot of physicians at SIA and those may And those may, those are subject to whatever we end up with through that process. And I know we, we haven't begun the outreach on that, but that's coming as well.
So I can make a comment, and I appreciate the comment by Director Tim Chuck. And I think the worry about having so many categoricals, there's only, there's only a dollar to spend down. So the more categoricals we have, it makes it difficult for us to be able to move. We're less fluid and flexible in our spending because of the categorical impact that the state or the ODE brings forward. So there's just a question and concern about that, that we have as a staff regarding the additional categoricals, well as our current service level. We're looking at a current, as been stated by our BA partners, we need to continue to advocate because I do worry about the current service level not being even close to where we need to be to continue to build to address our students' needs.
I don't know if you see my hand up?
Yeah, yeah, go for it, Susan.
You made me think, as we're asking these questions, if we head towards a recession, if we have this, if we have a recession, if we head towards. And that would impact the SIA funds. So I would think we'd have less revenue coming from corporate dollars potentially, and that would give less dollars that way?
Certainly a potential, Director Greiner, we'll, we'll, we'll be keeping an eye on that. That will be included in, as a part of the forecast that will here on Wednesday. We'll see how that cap tax is doing, what is generating. And I think the last update we got from the Office of Economic Analysis, they did their first recession forecast. They've done in the last quarter and showed some of those impact. As I recall, the amount available through the, for the SIA might flatten out, but it's still projected to increase the next couple of years. But it certainly, it's like every other revenue source we have, it ends up being subject to a recession and centered to kind of those kinds of bad factors.
Right. Thanks, Mike. With that, we're going to take a five-minute break for the board, and we will come back at 7:27. I think we have Principal Low from Seto Elementary. Great to see you. We'll turn it over to you for the presentation.
My name is Sam Holwell, and I'm the director of the university. And we know how hard it is to make today includes, I hope so, you. One of the, sure, I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to start as a senior of the principal at Shaw Heights. Because she went on to join the third of principal for nine years. And this is completely, it's good, it's not a status, she's normally one of the older experimenters, and we feel very, well, she does. Good evening, Supreme Court, I'm here. Why is it that I mentioned, I mentioned? I'm really interested in growing the world that is Sato. I told the pictures you have to get through my pictures. Oh, should I carry on? So the first picture I chose is our whole school community. It's a tradition that was started the first year Sato was open, come all together in the entire school in the gym to take a picture. There were two years where we weren't able to do it during COVID times, but we started that again last year. Then we have a class group of fifth graders who went on a field trip with their kindergarten buddies, and they came back so excited to have gone A on the field trip, as we lead the problem, the little kindergarten buddies. Then I have four fourth graders, who are problem solvers. There was some unkind words written on our slide, and they took it upon themselves to find some green paper and tape to cover it up so the custodian can take care of it. So I just wanted to show you whole school class, and then the individual students. So some bright spots and celebration. Every year, we select a theme that goes with how we celebrate kids, how we celebrate staff, how we run our staff meetings, our assemblies. We just kind of, so this year's theme is inquire, discover, explore. So our little raccoon, Maska, dressed up, and they're hiding here. And we try to tie our professional development theme, and we try to tie our assemblies and things that we do with kids to that. So you can see my very intentions, those are the guideposts that we try to tie things to and help guide us as we plan everything. So the two that I'm highlighting in the bright spots are the first one and the third one. So relationships and connections matter. And who we, who are we, question mark, we are Sato. So the first one is that I truly believe that in a school community, the way the adults treat one another has a direct correlation on how the kids interact and treat each other. And we have amazing adults who have been amazing role models for our little humans, and we have such a kind and caring staff, adult community, and that's directly related into our kids, like the little problem solvers that I showed you at first. Like I said, every year, we have a motto that we, that we, that we come up with. And but there's always the enduring one, and it's we are Sato, that never changes. And so that was kind of one of the things that we're highlighting too, is that we, the coolest thing about being in a new school community is that we understand the dynamic themes and flow that happen. We bring on new staff, our fifth graders circulate, we bring in kindergarteners. We're in, there's no static set of who we are and Sato is always changing. So we embrace that and discover every year, new discovery of who we are and what matters. So that is, that is our some of the high, high spots that we are highlighting. Things that we're working on, so in our school improvement plan, we have three goals. And they follow under the guidepost of systems and structures and what matters now. And so for collaboration, to really work on supporting each other in building systems, co-creating with staff, administration, to figure out how to really support the efficacy of our work. And so through staff meeting, committee meeting, but the more important one is our additional collaboration meetings that we work really hard to collaborate across the different support groups. Our emotional growth center teachers being kind to talk to the teachers where those children mainstream, that's what the magic of that is. Create that time. Same with our multilingual teachers, behavior, health, wellness. So we have created systematic ways to research the climate. But the other thing is, we're really focusing on maybe that every student makes a year through, for a year's instruction. And that is true for the early, and the, yeah. Then we're working on, of course, the implementation of our new social sciences and kind of classroom that will help us continue to celebrate student identity in the public, in the court. So on the data page, the only thing I would say is that we are more closely booked through 773 students with the EGC counted in there. This month, we enrolled 11, last month, we enrolled 14, 25 kids, but across all the grade levels. But we have continued to grow and grow out north there, and we're pretty full. But other than that, I think the last picture that I have there is another tradition. My first year there, we created a heart out of the student family, and it was so fun, and we just enjoyed that so much that we decided to do it every year. And for now, we've got a three-year plan to fill out we are Sato. So you can see the we that we did at the end of last year. So we are Sato, any questions?
Questions from the board? Eric?
I know you're a busy and bustling school, like capacity basically, but how does it, how's it feel to you, like running a school with the capacity for an elementary school? I know you've been around the districts. Does it, does it work well? Is it problematic, or how's it, how's it work for you?
It's a very large school. It, it, it does feel like we're kind of stuck in a seat, and there's a lot of bits and a lot of parents. And so I would say it brings unique challenges, not only spatially, but just in terms of interacting with that many people every year. Is that, is that what your question was?
Yeah, I was wondering, like, I'm sure here at school before, they're really like, you know, empty. And we're like, you know, they're kind of not at the capacity, or not, you know, not full, very empty, you know, so I wonder if the difference.
For some reason, school privacy over stuff, and you know, it would be just a big one, I would have been there, it wasn't. And then McKinley was pretty full, because I had it there too, and we had four of them in the modular, so I actually never
The wrong person asked the question.
Susan's got her hand up. Susan?
First of all, thank you so much for presenting. I know sometimes it always feels kind of intimidating. So thank you for coming today, especially after a long day. So my question is directly about one, our students, how are students doing mentally? You know, it's, it's been, it's, you know, it's even before COVID, kids were struggling with mental health issues. And, you know, being at home for a year and a half probably presented even more issues. So, and then, of course, I care about, you know, what's going on with the adults there as well. So if you could speak to that, that would be great.
Sure, thank you. I think there's a definite impact. I really appreciated what the two Harvard Institute leaders said about remembering that we're coming out of this incredible, historical time. And so I do see it in the kids, and they're able to be resilient and know how to interact and how to problem solve. We're definitely way more reactive in terms of getting support out there. Thank goodness, I have two counselors and a student success coach, a part-time social worker. We, we are popping around trying to help kids, help them, make them feel safe. And same with the teachers too. I mean, my, my coaching team has a chair, you know, has a chocolate right next to it, and shift where teachers can go and regroup when they need a quiet moment too. To hear their help and love in the team in my building has been a big year. And I, I can't imagine doing this without them, just myself and the system. So definitely see the impact in both students and teachers.
Hi, good evening. I, um, thank you so much for coming. It's always great to go visit your school. And just wanted to acknowledge Larissa too, for all of her work as well, sitting in the back. And it's just, it's such a welcoming place for students and families, and even coming by at the Smithel or at pickup, it's just amazing how it just flows. And I, I get your newsletter every week. So, and it's just, I'm always just so amazed by all the exciting things that are happening at your school, like on a regular basis. And just how informed you have the families as well. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Becky?
And I know you weren't there when the school opened, but when I think of Sato, I think it was opened as a school based on inquiry and STEAM and STEM. And just wondering if you're able to, to keep that line, or would it be getting larger? And just would staff turnover and that kind of thing, that is still the focus?
Excellent question. We have spent some of our time, looking back out of the pandemic, doing some re-missioning and revisioning, just kind of regrouping, capturing where we are. And that question came up a lot, because we did open strong as a STEAM school. But at that time, there were other programs that were supported across the district, PYPEL, STEM. And then we had a coordinator, we had a body to help us implement that with professional development, with the teacher. The kids would go to almost a special where they were doing more STEAM. So where we wound up after COVID times, was there wasn't all of that. And we were asking ourselves, are given to build who we are, is this what matters now? One of the questions we opened with in, in August. One of the questions we opened with in August, teachers. And we came to the conclusion that we are not identifying directly as a STEAM school, but we are an inquiry-based learning institution. So could there be STEAM things that come in? Yes, are we, are we going to focus on that inquiry piece? Because we don't have the resources that we have when we go there. So we didn't like go out there and acknowledge that widely yet because we're still in the process of figuring out what that means. But I do think that that maybe there's some sadness on staff for sure, especially for COVID members. And I'm sure there will be some sadness in the community as well, but we, we're not giving up on that inquiry mindset.
Anita?
Kind of, she asked the question that I was asking, similar. It's one of the unusual things that I've noticed in the school is that more than ninety-five percent of the kids are identified as talented and gifted. So from the ninety-five, when I look at the, unless I'm reading it wrong. And the talented, like for the grade five English arts, greater than ninety-five percent. Grade five math, math, talented and gifted is ninety-five percent.
They're passing.
That's of that group, how many are passing?
Is it passing or, oh, that group is.
Of that group, of that group, ninety-five percent of.
Okay. I was, I was just interested if you're able to keep. Well, ninety-five percent is passing, then you're probably doing your job. And if you're able to keep kids challenged at the, at the level that, you know, that they can do stuff.
I think so. I do think that we, it's actually harder to, when we have a larger divide, right?
Big school, yeah.
High and then kids who are national, but I do think that we had good success reaching the higher achieving learners as well and kind of differentiate for everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Ugana?
Thank you so very much. I enjoyed your presentation and thank you for the work you're doing. And everything looks good, looks great. But the participation rates, I always look at those. And the numbers are not, I, that's, they're not impressive to me. Cause I'm seeing the number of days missed due to suspension. I'm sorry, I, can you hear me okay? Okay. I'm sorry. I, I saw you doing it. I wasn't sure if you could hear me. Okay. So twenty-one, twenty-two, you have twenty-three point zero. That's a bit high. And when I looked at teachers and staff reporting that contributing to this sum making, it went down to seventy-nine percent. I just want to make sure that you would, you know, keep an eye out for that and hopefully improve those numbers. Other than that, everything is great. I don't have any question, just a comment that if you could just keep an eye on those numbers and make them look better next time.
I, thank you. But I think that one of the things we've tasked ourselves with is looking at our discipline practices and the restorative practices that go with it. It's a way, actually, part of our social emotional learning committee is taking our handbook and our level responses from when there's students unexpected, who they can use. How quickly respond and we can run that and hopefully understand that as well. And then the other piece, we do have, you know, specialized program in our building that, that can impact some of that too. So there, but I agree, there is one work really hard to keep children in school because that's very, very.
Thank you so much overall. Great job. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Okay. Thank you for the report.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next up, we have Principal Page from Akma, Rush City Arts and Communications Magnet Academy.
All right. My name is Ken Nell, I'm the executive administrator for High School and Elementary Programs. And it's my great pleasure to introduce to you the principal of Akma, Bjorn Page, who has a great passion for the mission of that school. And I'm curious very deeply about it. I'm excited for him to share his school. All right. Hopefully you'll be able to hear me. I'm getting better, but my voice says I look like Lauren Bacall, so give me a minute. Hopefully you'll be able to see some of our images. We have some pictures of kids, we check the kids. Good, and we have some of the kids, of the kids, makes sense at Akma. It is my pleasure to represent the students and the staff at Akma and share a little bit of arts and community vision. You can also invite you out. Sometimes talking about Akma is like, I don't know, painting and poem, you know, trying to describe music to the boys. And I think if you can get out to the school, you see something new pretty soon. My voice will be okay. I got water on it. Now, some of the things that, real celebrations for us are just this return to community. We are such an artisanal pool, the space of the place matters so much, especially for our artists. And this year even more than last when every face was half covered, we have an opportunity to make connections that we just haven't been able to make. The last few years have been transitioned, over and over transitions. And to have this current, I mean, performances again in our Performing Arts Center, moments in the blue box. Those are opportunities that our kids thrive. And this is why we do what we do. And so whether it's a big thing like Chicago is going on right now, get your tickets, or whether it's little, like an open mic night, we do one of those every month. And that's kind of that eleven-year-old with the ukulele and the dream. And they're out just to share a little bit of who they are. And even more importantly, it's about the audience applauding wildly and being supportive. And that's another learning that we do as just part of who we are. The other thing we've been able to do now is have people on campus again. We saw a picture of our superintendent there was the chairperson of the National Endowment for the Arts. They have double other guests that are doing this that day. And they went to go around and talk to the kids. And having those kinds of guests is super important. And the day after we had that, this is the big page, this is the little page. We'd like inviting elementary school students out of our campus. We do it a couple hundred years. And then we get, hang on, art, do music and our kids work with them. And those interactions between our kids and those kids are amazing. And, and it's also kind of a revelation for our kids. I was walking in the hallway, it was after some fifth graders were there. And one of my trumpet players was just in the halls. He just, I just need a minute. Because he had just been a couple hours as a fifth grader to me realizing, my goodness. And so those opportunities which we haven't had in several years are just so good for our kids. And it's this renewal for us as a school. Other things that are going on is rebuilding those connections in classes and pathways of the staff. To have more people on campus is good. To have students interacting with each other. And then we also see that interaction going beyond classes. So our clubs have blossomed this year. I mean, kids were so hungry to reconnect. So we see clubs based on interest, whether it's knitting or, and we have clubs based on affinity group, right? Our BSU, our, our Latino and Hispanic Association. We have others that are growing and this year are rising up. And we also see activity, whether it's swing dancing or whether it's school newspaper or robotics. They came in third place in the competition just this last week. Those are opportunities for our kids really to connect. And there's work to be done. And so the things that we're working on right now are making sure that we have the best representation of kids at Akma that we possibly can. Akma's demographics look more like BSD's demographics. We're doing some really personal outreach to try to help spread the word. Because I'm convinced as people know about options, that they are options. We're going to see a broader group of kids in that group to get into the school. And then we're going to be able to see our student body reflect what BSD is about. When I look down at our AP numbers, dance, music, I say that we have representation based on our current demographics. If we can change those demographics and keep that representation in these programs, I think we're going to be a better school. Very real, you heard it mentioned a few times. The last few years have been really hard on kids and adults. And so I put up here our behavioral health and wellness. We've seen such a strong team. I'll answer a question, maybe the answer that I can expand on a little bit. We've added a wellness center, we had it in our counseling, added it now in the place. Because to be perfectly honest, the pandemic was big, but we have been in three schools, three buildings in six. On the kitchen, from owner. And so that's a transition too. Now to be home, be home with each other, able to make art, make new moves, it just gives me a lot of hope.
Questions from the board? Sunita?
Yeah, so when, when you pick applications, do you take it only from Beaverton School District or outside Beaverton too?
They're all from Beaverton and the lottery just for us and for all of the option schools goes through the district office first and then we follow up our second.
Okay, thank you.
Susan has a question.
Oh, yes.
First of all, thank you so much. I, you know, I can just hear the enthusiasm in your voice and appreciate all your hard work. I know your, Akma's been through a lot as, and I, I have to admit that I had a little difficulty hearing you remotely. But, you know, just having a building being built during COVID and then coming back. I'm excited that you're in your new school. I look forward to taking a tour of it. So I know you touched on the mental health of the students, you know, and you have a middle school and a high school. And I just, I can only imagine that, that is a really difficult group of kids to kind of manage the different emotions and all that. Do, I mean, I realize that you have, you know, you feel confident with your support group. Do you, I want to ask this in a way. If there was more funding, would you want more support, mental health support is how I would ask that?
Well, I would definitely say no to help. But I would also say that if we were to change in the last two minutes, our behavioral health matters to you. It has been profound. I mentioned, I'm so sorry if you can't hear me. I don't know if it's me or the mic or our connection. Okay, we were able to add another counselor this year, which is a huge, huge. We have a full-time school social worker who is awesome and so blessed for our kids. The student support specialist position, which is also full-time, we're working with our kids and those two, student support specialists in our school social worker have made profound differences for kids. And then between that, grad mentor and some other positions that we've been able to kind of wrap around, we recognize we have emotional kids, right? Artists by nature. And I think art can be a really healing thing and professional support too. So to be able to have that professional support, and my answer to your question is yes. But it's one of those that I almost already had, was able to say yes to because last year we saw an increase. This year it's been a bit.
Well, I, I just have a comment to make on that, you know, when you're saying that, that our, you know, that I, I think that there's a lot, there's a connection between, and I say this for my own kids. Those who tend to have musical or artistic kind of talents. There's a tendency, I'm, I'm, this is a generalization of having anxiety and depression with, that goes with that. So I, I know what you're saying there, but I also am happy that they have the opportunity to express themselves through arts. I'm glad that we have this magnet school. It's been around since nineteen ninety-five and I'm really proud to have Akma as an option school in Beaverton. I am also very happy to hear because that you're working hard at expanding opportunities for those marginalized populations out there to get them engaged in Akma because I think it's so important. So thank you so much.
Karan?
Hi, it was amazing to visit the school and see the students. I think it's my second time there now. And just the joy of learning and, and being able to learn in the different styles. And something you pointed out in Students to Two around the inclusivity and acceptance and the feeling of belonging across the whole building and in all the hallways and the different classes we walked into. So one, one area I think I noticed was, was around having less than five percent of the Latino students passing in math. And I don't know, as you think about expanding and trying to bring in more diversity, I'm just thinking about how, what supports might be needed for the academic in that process. But overall, I think it was just an amazing experience to visit and to see the joy in the students and the joy of learning.
Other questions from the board? Eric?
What kind of a creative outreach do you have to kind of, you know, the mix, you know, right now, it looked like you said, it's not like matched the, the district averages of, you know, by different subgroups. So how are you guys going to do that to make sure people know about it, market it, get more applicants?
But the, thank you for your question. So we're in good partnership. School in our district and honestly, we face in ISP as well. So as a trio, I reckon, I said, we can all do a better job and we want to consult in our head. So event, when I went to Barnes Elementary, it was all friends presenting, nobody trying to make a pitch. We have plenty of normal kids, you know, I think as families have that information, they're going to be better able to make those decisions. So making sure that our materials are available in multiple languages and then working with our, with Shelly and Shaw to get that information out as much as we possibly can to families in native languages. That helps with this whole process and also to it early. So we're working right now for the current season. We've already had conversations, Ken said, maybe he wants to. Just moving forward, so as we move into next school year as well, this isn't just something we tried to do here, but it's a very systematic approach.
I know I graduated from Sunset in nineteen ninety, but like we didn't have all these options. So these are some crown jewels for some of my friends who would love to specialize and go into things that, you know, we didn't have available at Sunset below Beaverton, so.
Ugana?
Thank you so much. I enjoyed learning more about Akma tonight. And I wanted to say thank you that I'm grateful that our students have the mental support, mental health support that they need. So just keep doing the good work that you're doing. I just wanted to point out that your numbers are fantastic. I don't know how you managed to come down from twenty-nine point five to eight on your suspension rate. So just keep up that good work. It is beautiful to see. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you so very much.
I've got a comment and a couple of questions. One, I always love visiting Akma. It is one of my favorite visits of the year. And Karan, I think you said it earlier, but it's an incredibly inclusive, beautiful, vibrant environment. And every time I've been there and been able to go class to class with Bjorn, I've, I've enjoyed it. That I know that there is a, a challenge that all of our schools are facing and even nationwide around attendance. And I'm wondering what sorts of things you guys are doing in that area to deal with that issue?
It's a really good question. I would see that very linked to our behavioral health and wellness. We see a lot of the absenteeism. We begin to talk with kids and talk with families, a lot of anxiety is built, a lot of those kind of, they were around before the pandemic. That was mentioned earlier today. We thought the pandemic really reduced that anxiety and changed the mindset of a lot of kids. And so now it really is both looking as much as we can, communicating clearly with our families. Let me find out, how do we roll down one individual, families, kids, get them to campus? There's some kids who anxiety is very high, but we often know that if we have a kid stay at home, that anxiety is not going to be lowered. Both their absenteeism is going to get higher. So how are we able to get them on campus? How are we able to build that relationship with them and families? And I think that can make.
Thank you for that. My other question is, you know, there's a lot of data here and there's a lot of different narratives with the data. But one thing that was kind of intriguing to me, when I looked at your ACT data, I saw increases in English, reading and science across the pandemic. Which is interesting because, you know, I think we've seen a slide, you know, in most areas across the pandemic. And I was, I was wondering, do you think this has anything to do with how the arts help students with resiliency? Is there any, you know, I know it's not a big representational size, it's just one school, but what are your observations around that?
Well, you know, I'm biased. I, I, patient by Iris, we're not going to take a writer, she's a part of the life of achieving things. And I really feel like we have an opportunity, a school so focused on the arts, especially some of our older kids, to be honest. They have that conviction, for them to have that agency in their own life, whether it's painting or drawing or acting, that naturally. Plus now they approach the science and reading best, right? They, they start a blank sheet of paper and they come up sort of harmless. And I think that that mind, that information, how could this match? That's them, our younger ones, especially the seventh graders over pandemic. I think again, when you're eleven and twelve years old, it's hard for you to have that perfect same boy, right? I think there's, there's just a maturity that helps in that regard. But I want to think that is true. I'm sticking to the story that it is. And I think that we also have seen. Uh, I'm sticking to the story that it is, and I think that we also have seen just such dedication. It goes in our building. I think that has helped bring some kids over the future.
Thank you for everything you do and uh look forward to seeing you guys later this year. We have uh Carrie Delft and Shelley Bailey Shaw with a local option levy update, which might have something to do with the passage of the local option levy.
Now, although the municipal election results will come at a later date and tomorrow is the last day for any mail-in ballots that were postmarked. By uh the, by election day to arrive and be counted. Um, we do have pretty clear results from the electorate, which was overwhelmingly supportive of the levy. In Multnomah County, we're seeing an initial, as of this afternoon, seventy-one point six percent support. And then that was in Washington County and in Multnomah County, uh, there was uh so far nearly fifty-nine percent support. Uh, so many in Multnomah County and that much smaller population that's in. There as well. So we will. More information about the actual vote breakdown once that was okay, people from Washington County, Multnomah County to the board. We we just have.
And you just said the district want to thank the board um for uh your efforts, uh Karen and Sunita for sharing. Um, I know how much time and effort went into all of this, all those community and school meetings and getting out to farmer's burger week on, week after week. So. Um, thank you so much um for all the advocacy that you did as well.
Eric, here, any questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you to your team as well for um all the work and support and um helping us organize um when we were going to be places and getting information. Nonpartial information out to the community. So I think getting um as we were knocking on doors and talking to um the community, we mentioned, oh, yeah, we have a mailing. We've seen the map and uh um and sat some really good conversations around um. Why they are supporting the levy. So thanks for all that work as well.
Sunita?
Thank you. It's a great video. People loved it. And uh thanks to the voters and the business organizations who supported and made this happen and the community. Thank you so much.
Other questions, comments from the board? I just a big thank you to Karan and Sunita. Being a board member is a very large time commitment. And adding, doing that campaign on top of it is an incredibly other time commitment. And um, this was a, you know, a difficult time to be out campaigning and you guys really, really supported all of our students. So thank you for all that work and. Thanks to the staff for all the.
I want to say thank you to Becky too, because uh she helped us and, you know, whenever we had a question, she helped us. So thank you, Becky, for your help. Sorry, I had to say that.
And thanks to staff for making sure to get good factual information out to the community. Um, next up, we have a declaration of surplus property. Uh, so Dr. Carl Mead and Stephen Sparks.
Sparks, Director of Administrative for Long Range Planet. We have a unique identity in a part of these years this evening to. Clear a building as surplus. This is, is a situation that has been brought out on a really application prospect for the city of. It involves Merle Davies School, which is located on in the. Beaver Tideline School. And the unique provision in in the Beaverton Code is that we are required, because it is a local historic landmark. To have a notice of building as available for sale and moving. You know, vacation. If no one can do that, then you need to come to you, the school board, to have a letting declare a surplus. This is a part of the, of the Beaverton High School, right? But go to the next slide please. You can see that in the red outline, this is our current plan design. For the footprint of the Beaverton High School and also the that the interior part of the building. Is located where our employees is located. So we would request that to allow us to come back at the next four days. To declare this building as surplus. We will then advertise the building as available for sale. January, prior to our submitting land use applications from the city of Beaverton. And assuming that you will get a bona fide offer of the building. Then we'll be able to proceed with demolishing the building, assuming we get approval from the Beaverton to be. But I would have to take any questions that you might ask.
Becky?
What constitutes a bona fide offer?
We would have um. A person come to us with a contract to move the building. By the time that we need to proceed with construction of the project. That would constitute a most important or uh a bona fide offer.
So could someone come to us and want it for the materials or? Or or something like that, or or would an only offer be that they have to physically take it off in place to meet the requirements? Of the local historical?
It is the latter of the two. That you suggested, because of the code is to preserve the historical landmark. By being able to pick it up and relocate it somewhere else in the city, it's not too.
Becky, by way of illustration, I think there's a building that's like at the foot of Toilager that used to be at Portland State University and they. Cut it in two and put it on wheels and moved it over there. Think that.
Clarifying question? I don't know if you saw my hand.
Yeah, one second, Susan.
When I was with the city of Beaverton, we had. I can remember at least two examples like this, and they were small buildings. And there was no. Bona fide offer in either of those instances. And so the project, we proceed with the demolition of that.
Susan, you have a a question?
I I just a clarifying question. I I'm not quite sure. I heard, did you say that uh as we're going through this process and uh. Potentially uh moving uh. This property, would we be responsible with, for paying for the moving of that building? Or would the city of Beaverton?
No, it would only be a party, a separate party, including the city of Beaverton, but unlikely. It would be available to any interested party in the community to come negotiate an acquisition and move the building.
Thank you.
Becky?
So I I'm just, and I know that this is not your expertise. But when we have had conversations about moving portables and having someone come and buy portables, it's usually cost prohibitive because of the moving costs. It is so costly. Moving costs. I would assume ballpark, what it would cost to move a full building?
That is not my great expertise. I can speculate that the.
A lot.
A lot. Yep. Karan, I saw your hand.
Yes. Um, so um, when you say an interested party, would it be an individual or does it have to be um a corporate entity? Is it any party at all who shows interest that can make a bona fide offer?
Is any party at all that can show a bona fide interest? And it's in a way, uh, said important under ten check earlier. It's not only, you know, the way does that party have a um. A contract to move the building by the time the demolition would otherwise take place. So this is also having a slight potential. That offer, if I have got a five thousand square foot residential lot, and I have a building. Footprint of more than five thousand square feet, and our residential building, that would have cost.
And um just to clarify, we cannot demolish or offer to sell until the board uh decides to declare it a surplus, correct?
As part of our. Approval process with the city of Beaverton, we have to demonstrate that in all of the provisions of the Beaverton Code. Adding those provisions on that we have advertised the building as available. And that we have undertaken all bona fide offers. By our own policies for us to. Sell something that we own, we have to declare it surplus first. Hence the reason why we're here this evening is to identify this issue and then go back to at your next. Do a declaration for clearing the building surplus.
So Steve, maybe if I can interject, so really quickly, we would answer the question, this is a city of Beaverton process, we need to. Follow for us to be able to continue to move on with the Beaverton High School build. And this is a step that we're doing internal to declare surplus. And uh what's a, and we are on a very tight timeline for the construction. Maybe you could speak to that because cost escalators. I know people uh dealt with this before in other districts where people want to wait on this, but. Anytime we wait, the escalator right now for construction is what?
We, during the long range facilities, we assume seven percent annual escalation rate. Um. Any other new ads get maybe more, you know, right now, but if you were right, Dr. Valderes, this is a city of Beaverton. Yeah, in order to provide to be our timelines to um start the protections on this site in June twenty twenty-four. We need to have our land use approvals buttoned up. This is coming spring. Which includes the. The story. So we can then get through the building process, start construction in June twenty twenty-four. It seems like it's a long way out. We are sprinting right now.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry. At least not a practicing one, anyway. So um, what I'm understanding is we have two options facing us at this point. It's either we get a bona fide offer or we demolish. But out of the two options, the one option that puts money in our pocket would be. Do we, what we gain from demolishing, I just have to add.
What we receive uh for some demolition money is. Our ability to maintain our schedule to construct an open, you know, school, it's what we advertised in. Capital or for last spring. The amount of money that we could realize for this building. Fifty dollars.
Yeah, so so I I I think my point about the escalator, if we wait a year, the cost from Beaverton High School goes from what to what?
Our estimate for the project right now is approximately two hundred and thirty million dollars. Um, escalated by seven percent, that's gonna add about twenty million dollars.
Come on, Eric.
We wait a year.
And Stephen, the likelihood that somebody would want to put Merle Davies on wheels and put it somewhere else? Have you received any interest from the community at all about that?
No, yeah, I don't understand at all.
I have a question.
Uh, Sunita?
Um, how much does the demolition cost?
Demolition costs vary depending on what's in the building. So for example, we assume there's going to be asbestos. And potentially other hazardous materials in that building, as well as in Beaverton High School. That will increase the cost for demolition. And it's going to be in the Beaverton. I don't remember the line item in our budget, but it's several of them.
So if somebody takes the building, even though we get only fifty dollars, we're still saving a million dollar? Is that what you're, is that what I'm hearing then?
That is a potential. If um someone were able to make this off our hands. As a building, we wouldn't have to um deal with it. But I would also qualify that any moving of a structure of that size, of that construction type. Which includes unreinforced basic, but likely that if somebody willing to.
Take it very.
Through the city street. And then, but back up, it's prohibitively expensive. It's not as if we could move it across Arlington Road to a ready site. It just doesn't exist.
Okay, thank you.
I see Susan hand up.
Um, not to belabor this, and I I am basically having my hand up. I just want to reiterate that um it would, the the time involved. Just according to uh Steve and Gus is in terms of if we delay the project of Beaverton High School being built. The cost increase would be, you know, twenty million dollars, which would be more than what it would, you know. There's a cost benefit to look at there. So that's my point.
Steve, I have a quick question too. Um, the demolition costs have already been rolled up into the plans that we've put together as part of the bond, right? So this isn't a new expense. This is something that's been budgeted. Okay, we expect that. Uh, Becky?
So so my last question is just, when you see something being built within the city of Beaverton, there's usually a really nice blue and white sign that says. The public has thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, whatever to 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 save, whether they want that to. To be built or a road to go through, whatever this is. I believe we're going through these extra steps because this is on the local historical registry. So you have to abide by Beaverton's rules. We have our own policy of surplus. That's a separate sort of thing. Will there be this same sort of thing of public input or allotment that you, that they are building into this process because it is a local historical?
Absolutely. The demolition of a historic landmark is what we call a tight degree. Uh, land use application, which requires a public hearing. This entire project will be in front of the Beaverton planning commission. And any person who is interested in code and testimony and written or oral on this project.
Stephen, I think you have a second part to your presentation, right, about portables?
Yes, if um, were there other questions that have this reflect property for Merle Davies? I'd like to um begin with the presentation upon what we need to uh. Over, yeah, uh, some of my points across the district. We have uh a role very well to renew the portals. We were here before the new act, brand, with phase one. Clearing a number of portals, surplus, for the new one on site. That that I would look uh a little bit uh deeper into development projections, into projects that are happening with the capital bond. With projects that uh you're able to. And do with uh program reserve with twenty fourteen bond. And as a result, there are um a number of additional portals that we've identified in your packet this evening. That we can declare as surplus. I would like to be sure you understand that the declaration of surplus gives staff the ability to. gives staff the ability to remove portals, these identified portals over time. You're not going to flood the market with, hey, come and get a portal uh from Beaverton School District all in one go. There is a limited market, and so we want to take advantage of that. From our last phase one uh proposal, we were able to sell one of the portals, the one that's over there for growth elementary for about five thousand dollars. We're going to be some more frequently classroom portals for phase one because there is basically no market for those. We're fairly hopeful that we'll be able to sell some of these um portals that we're identifying in phase two. Some are um generally about condition, a all much for a dollar type of thing, just to get on the ballpark. But that means we think, once we decide to uh market the portals, we also have a need to move some portals to uh another site to accommodate uh additional students in our school uh scenario, and this will give us all today's to that. This is going to be a um multi-phase project. The portals we're listening here to face to may still be around three or four years. They'll be heading upon uh what are our staff requirements. For example, for that like hills, we need to keep them a quarter of present, so it's a little bit quiet, really project done. At that time, we'll do a good one. For the portals that are on the girls, like we talked about in phase one, I'm going to get rid of those right away. Um, and it goes to, that's true, it's going to be demolished. So, um, I'm trying to walk through the sites from anywhere to the floor.
Let's let's go with questions here. Sunita?
Since we just heard the club hope, um talking about the homeless youth, can these shelters which are in good condition be used for the that youth section? You know, for homeless.
I think it would be a real challenge since uh none of those uh except for two uh cam are plugged, they don't, they're not wet, what we call wet, they're not able uh there's no plumbing in them.
But there are two that
There are two that are in pretty rough shape, they're uh lethal. And you would have to look really closely, do a very close inspection and see if they remotely useful to accommodate.
Thank you.
And also just really quick on that one, you know, we would not be housing those students in our property. So we would need to find a partner to be able to move those or church, so we would need to provide a partner, right? So probably make sure there's clarity. Other questions from the board? Okay, great, thank you. Great, we we'll look forward to voting on that at the next school board meeting. Thank you, Stephen. Um, hey, the next item is the OSBA Board of Directors election. And one of our very own Susan Greenberg is up for uh election on position fifteen. Uh, we also have the OSBA Board position sixteen with Maureen Wolf, who is up for election. Um, the voting is basically open between uh November fifteenth and December fifteenth. Um, and we will come together as a board on December twelfth at our next board meeting, and we're going to vote uh for these positions. So if anybody has any comments or questions uh right now, uh there's also an opportunity to reach out to folks between now and the next board meeting and ask them any questions about their candidacy. Um, but I will open the floor up if anybody has any comments or questions. And Becky?
Sure, for anyone that wants to look at um these two applications, you can find on the oh site, and you can see what their credentials are and their background. And so if you um, we of course know our own Susan, but if you don't know Maureen Wolf, I encourage you to look to see what her uh what she's done in the past in this position.
And I would be remiss if I didn't include, thank you, Susan, for stepping up. This is a huge job uh with additional meetings and representing us at the state level, and we really appreciate your service last year doing this work. Uh, and that you would step up again and raise your hand to do this again. Much appreciated. Hey, then the uh Susan, do you have any further comments?
Oh, it just said, thank you.
Very. Um, the next item is the OSBA Legislative Priorities, um which are outlined in a resolution, and then the priorities uh follow that. Um, again, at our next school board meeting, we're going to have an opportunity to vote to uh basically adopt these and and support them at the statewide level. Um, I think there's a lot of great information here. Um, and I would just start by, you know, asking board members if they have any questions about these priorities, any comments about the priorities. Um, I I would note that these are aimed at the upcoming legislative session. Um, and I personally appreciate the focus on um ensuring that our school district gets the proper funding to be able to serve kids. And that financial focus is huge. We're going into a long session. That's when the school budget is determined for the next two years from the state. Um, and so I appreciate the the strong language in here uh about the priorities that um will make sure that we have the funding to support our students. But those are my comments. I'm wondering what what you all think. Becky?
And this is where um I serve on the Legislative Policy Committee, representing Washington County. And um we start this process over a year ago and every quarter, and we discuss and refine and fine tune. And um that's a come, you hear me say, every meeting at the current service level and um, so uh yes, this will be, and um we met as a regional roundtable, which um Sunita was there uh on Friday with me. And um as part of our part here in Beaverton, we want to reach out to our local legislators before the legislative session starts. And um have a little meeting with them to explain to them in depth what is Beaverton's needs and our current service level. And um there should not be any discussion below ten bill, we don't even start, we start at ten billion. Uh, I know, up, but I mean, nothing below, nothing below ten, we need more like ten.
And six.
Six, I know, but nothing below, none of this nine, three, nine, six stuff.
You're ten, six to here in eleven.
So anyway, that's, we are, we are going to be reaching out with our legis- legislative policies, especially with our new legislators that we just elected and let them know what our needs are here in Beaverton. So that will be a priority for 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 all of us. Yeah, so um I just wanted to share with you, this is, this is something that's been in the works for well over a year.
Thanks, Becky, for your work on that. Yeah, you have a question, correct?
So what I'm hearing you say is that, um, I think it sounds like you and Sunita will be letting us know when we're going to be organizing and doing that work, is that correct?
We need to actually, yeah, we need to, because Susan has advocacy committee and will
Yeah.
that, and um so, um, but we want to do that before, because we will also have a poll Washington County roundtable that we um will be planning for, I'm at a meeting on Thursday night about that. So we plan on doing that in January, and we're trying to figure out whether we do it in Salem, or do it up here, or what we're going to do. But this is just about Beaverton and the Beaverton legislators and us getting some one-on-one time to be able to explain to them our budget and our current service level.
So you'll be letting us know.
Yeah, yeah, well, we can't, because we can't have more than three persons, a public, it'd be a public meeting. So we'll get the, we'll get that figured out, but then there will be a meeting where we have all of the Washington County legislators. But as far as like the meeting with Mike and and that should be coordinated probably with Susan's advocacy committee.
Yeah, amazing.
And just to pull all the pieces out here, we've got the legislative priorities, which we'll vote on in our next board meeting. And that is to support OSBA's priorities. We have an advocacy committee that's going to be putting together priorities for the board that Susan chairs, and they're going to be meeting soon. And that can be different, that can be our personal priorities. And then there are meetings where we go out and we advocate with legislators, starting with kind of the big kickoff that Becky's talking about. But usually, as we get down to the finish line in Salem, uh there'll be personal conversations, there'll be times when we go down to Salem and talk to people. So this will be accelerating as we reach Sinai Dye in the end of the se- session and getting, you know, the big budget bills put together.
So also, um, the Color Caucus of OSBA also has a legislative advocacy uh group. And I would be representing District One for that. So if anybody has any comments or things that they want to make, because one of the things that we want to make, we want to impress is that the needs of the students are different, even though the the um, even though enrollment might have gone down, but because of uh COVID, the needs of the students are more, and we need more money to do that. So if um the Color Caucus or the BIPOC students have uh things that they want to point out to, they can always come to me and talk, talk about that, and I can take that to the uh legislators too. Thanks.
And thank you for your service on, Sunita, we appreciate that. Other questions, comments? Okay, this will be coming before us at the next board meeting, and and now we're going to move over to action items. Um, the first action item is for the school board electoral zones. That open up the floor for conversation on that. Do I hear a motion uh to approve the school board electoral zone revision?
Susan? Yeah, so, yeah, I'm working, I'm just gonna get the wording right here. Um I move that the school board adopt the proposed twenty twenty-three board member district zone map for implementation in the next board member election in May twenty twenty-three as per board policy BBB.
Second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. Um, so we have Stephen Sparks and Dr. Mead. I don't know if you have a presentation for us tonight, or if you're just here to answer questions.
We um have heard a power point for the record, we don't need to go through it if you don't wish us to. And uh we're here to get any way of such a way.
Let me, board members, do you have any questions about the zones? I know we have gone over them in a work session, we went over them last time. I don't know, you know, I'm really glad that we have the slides for the public record, but I don't know if we need to go through them right now. Um, if anybody has any questions before we, Becky?
Um, I will be voting in favor of this, um, and I appreciate the work that was done. Um, since our last board meeting, I've been meeting with uh potential candidates. And everyone is is quite anxious for us to see a detailed map uh when we approve this of the, you know, actual streets. So I will be bugging you um to get that detailed map as soon as we uh approve, approve this, so people can see actual you know, streets. Um, so anyway, but thank you for all the work.
Are there questions and comments from the board before we vote? Right. Um, okay, uh, board members, uh, answer with aye, nay, or abstain when I call your name. Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Karim Perez?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Uh.
Degard?
Aye.
Ugunna Enenaya?
Aye.
Becky Timchuck?
Aye.
I'm Claire, aye, and the motion passes. Um, next up, we have the appointment of Equity Advisory Committee members. Do I hear a motion to uh a to adopt, or a motion to adopt the appointment of the Equity Advisory Committee members?
Hold on a second, I'm trying to, um I move that the, I'm trying to find the right resolution here. Um I move that the school board approve the the appointees to serve on the Education Equity Advisory Committee in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
I second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Um, Carrie, Pat, Tatiana, do you have some words for us before we ask some questions?
Just a briefly review of this is, uh, the legislature recently passed legislation requiring the school boards across for and our school districts across Oregon establish education equity advisory committees following certain requirements. And in Beaverton, there previously was an equity policies task force, task force. Uh, but it was not entirely aligned or it wasn't designed in order to be aligned to the new legislation. So the district is looking to reconstitute uh that equity committee at all in more greater alignment with the intent and letter of the legislation. Uh, so our equity administrators have gone through a process to solicit and uh select for recommend the super and and then the board, uh slated candidates for the board to consider for approval. And they have to be answering the questions about that.
Questions from the board? Yeah, hearing none, um, I will, we'll do the roll call for a vote. Um, if board members answer with aye, nay, or abstain, Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Karim Perez?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Uh.
Sunita Guard?
Aye.
Ugana Enenaya?
Aye.
Becky Timchuck?
Aye.
I'm Colette, aye, and the motion passes unanimously. Looking forward to hearing more about the work of this great committee. Okay, then we have another committee, we have Budget Committee. Uh, so do I hear a motion to approve the appointment of Budget Committee members to fill vacancies?
It resolved that the school board approved the following appointees to fill the two vacant budget committee positions. And I'm going to mispronounce this, so I apologize. Alec Mar- Marota, Zone Four, for twenty-two, twenty through twenty, twenty-five. And then Dr. Lisa Schultz, Zone Seven, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five.
Your second?
Second motion.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded. Uh, Mike, do you have anything for us tonight?
We started this process and obviously, and here we are as uh we lined up then uh ready to take action, get the budget committee members aboard. I will mention these people are repeats, they're coming back, they served one of your appointments last year, so continuity would be great.
It's just to clarify, just uh, uh, one of the, one of the folks that's going to be volunteering for this service Luke is, Luke is also on the but, on the, on the, on the Equity Committee, that's by statute as well. That's somebody from the Budget Committee or from the Equity Committee has to be on the Budget Committee. So double duty, so we have great gratitude for this individual.
Yes, thank you, Allo.
Thank you, Allo. Uh, other comments? Eric?
There's no risk with the new boundary, these people will fall out of that, or does that matter at all anyways?
Uh, I had a conversation with my person in their, in the new boundary, so. But I think if they weren't, then uh I did have a Budget Committee member once who moved out of the boundaries and they just put it up the the following year.
I think the way the statute reads that, um, it would be just like if if us, if we were, and it was in the middle of your term, your, your grandpa, I think the, the statute lawyer knows it's official. But I think, I think your grandfather is what I'm saying, right? And then once it's up the next time through mid midterm, then uh then you have to be living for sure in the zone.
I I think it ends at the end of the year is what happened. I- in the prior cases I dealt with, it was at the end of the year. And the person, I think, had longer on their term to go, but then they said, okay, next year, you're going to have to go out to get somebody new, because they're out, they now live outside of their zone.
But we didn't make them, once you approved the zones here, we didn't make them, um we didn't make them have to change, to switch out until it was the end of their term. No.
We get clarity for the board.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I I just want to um thank Dr. Lisa Schultz for stepping up again. Um, she's a former board member, and she has a lot of insight into the district, and to be able to bring that forward, and having served us last year, and then stepping up for another three years is much appreciated. Uh, you know, these are time, this time out of people's um day to be able to come up and and to read that budget is a lot of time, that's a thick budget and to stay educated on it and understand all the acronyms, so I really appreciate her service. And I think she will do a great job for the board in the coming years. Um, and with that, we will take a vote. Um, board members answer with aye, nay, or abstain. Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Karim Perez?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Uh.
Sunita Guard?
Aye.
Ugana Enenaya?
Aye.
Becky Timchuck?
Aye.
I'm glad, aye, and the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to our new Budget Committee members. Um, now we're, we're at the end of our action items, so it's time for individual comments from board members. Um, does anybody have some comments they'd like to make tonight? All right?
Um, it was kind of noted, but, uh, Sunita elected the, um, the, of the, of OSBA leadership for the Color Caucus, um, representing Washington County. So I just wanted to name that out loud. So thank you, Sunita, for stepping up there as well.
Thank you, Karen. So that, with that, I hope people, if they have anything that they want to talk about that relates to the Color Caucus or the BIPOC students, if you want to talk about it, please feel free, you can reach out to me. And, um, I also want to say that the OSBA conference was great opportunity as a new board member. This is my second year. I learned a lot of good things, and, um, it was a very good experience again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, it was already brought up by our staff, but it is, uh, Native American Indigenous Peoples Month, and I, I want to acknowledge, uh, that and that we have a place for, uh, all of our students to belong and a place that they can get added supports. And, um, I've been asked, I will be, um, Susan, I was going to tell you this in person. I've been asked to, um, go to the Whitford, uh, Native Club, um, this, this week, and so I will be visiting with those students this week at, um, at Whitford. And, um, appreciate that. And, um, I had the opportunity to speak to, uh, Mountainside Leadership Club on Election Day and, um, talk to them about the importance of advocacy and getting involved in their community and making sure every eighteen-year-old in that room, uh, voted before the end of the day. And, um, explained again how important it was that the levy passed. And, um, again, as we've said over and over again, just thank you so much. Um, of all the people on the board here, I probably know better than most how much work it is on top of your family, your professional lives of, of taking that on and supporting our teachers. And I just want to thank you, um, for your, all your hard work, uh, for, for doing that. So, uh, thank you so much, and thank you very much, uh, that we are so fortunate to live in a community that values education and shows us, and it's something we cannot ever take for granted, and we always need to be good stewards, um, of the, of the taxpayers' dollars. But I thank them so much for supporting our teachers.
Susan? See, have your hand up?
Yeah, um, first of all, I'm going to congratulate Becky, um, once again for, um, being School Board, uh, Member of the Year. Um, I'm very proud of Becky. Um, she, I'm seeing the second School Board member to receive that honor. Um, so, um, very proud of, uh, Beaverton School Board and very proud of Becky. Um, the other thing, I'm, uh, was very fortunate to, um, tour Southbridge High School with Dr. Baldaros and, uh, uh, Principal Nislanic last week. Um, Southbridge does a lot of creative, um, work, um, putting students first, and it's always exciting to go there. Um, and I think I had one more, but I don't remember, so I'm going to pass it on. Thank you.
Becky?
I am so sorry. I did forget one other thing. Not asking anyone here, because I know we have more than enough on the plate. But I am an avid tutor. We still need more, not anyone here. I'm just saying, this is the time that all call to action. Our students need us more than ever. If you know someone that's retired, if you know someone that just has a little bit, it's, it's forty-five minutes, they provide training. Do not have to know how I cannot answer their math questions. Don't have, so I just, uh, the Socratic method, ask a lot of questions. So you don't, but this is the time, if you've got anybody that you know, neighbor, someone at church, family, I'm not saying any of us, we've got more than enough, but we need more avid tutors for our students.
Other comments from the board? I would, uh, one more time, congratulate Becky Timchuck on being School Board Member of the Year. I could not think of a more deserving person. Congratulations, you've done so much great service to Beaverton students. You, uh, deserve that wonderful. And, uh, thank you, Sunita, Karin. You guys stepped up in a huge way for our students with this levy. It was following, you know, a really robust campaign with the bond, which is actually quite difficult to run two campaigns like that consecutively. And I know it was hundreds of hours that you guys put into making the same pass. Thank you for that leadership on our board. It is very much appreciated. And I know our students for five years now will have two hundred and eighty-six teachers, and that's, that's a huge thing. That is an enormous thing. Um, and then thank you to the voters. Not only did it pass, but the very high level of support, and we appreciate that. We don't, as a board, ever take that for granted. Um, we have to earn that every day, so we appreciate that. And with that, um, I hope everybody has a good night.